Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane's legislative session. We will start our evening off with the land acknowledgement, which I am always honored to read. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Navarette.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
And tonight, we are honored to have poetry at the podium, and we will have Joe Williams. Is Joe in the audience?
Hi.
Are you online, Joe? No?
I'm still in the room.
Is somebody else? Are you the small-town rebuke?
Ah, I'm Stephanie Vogel.
Well, come on down. We'll get it figured out.
Yeah, I'm not Joe.
Okay. Tell us your name again and the title of your poem.
Um, Stephanie Vogel. Am I on the mic good? Yeah. Stephanie Vogel, and my poem is "In the Halls of Earthly Powers." I see children blinking in the halls of earthly powers, eyes wide and mouths agape, an innocent awe at the tensile grandeur. Children hear and see inconsistency in adult voices and choices as nature intended. A moral echo rings into their future. They hear the intentions rather than what was said by us. Their understanding may take longer in years, but there they will arrive. Knowledge and subtlety will creep in as their shock and maturity naturally deepens, eventually seen through our haughty cultural facades. In the brutality and in the lies, the greedy foe needs, the hiding behind false creeds, clear-eyed, they will see, eventually see what was left undone in the halls of earthly powers. As we pad our already luxurious nests, as we wave the self-righteous flags of unrest, as we salivate on the Civil War drums, I say to you, we are failing our future. We have come civically undone. Trash, mountains, selfish money deals, falsely limited choices presented, and intellectual discrepancies on both sides dominate our discussions, as if there is ever only two sides to any topic. The foundations of democracy are based in compassionate compromise, not the rhetoric of "give me what is mine." What is the devil whispering in your ear, my dears? Where are the adults? Did you leave the moral compass in that wooden pew? Did it fall as you casually threw coin in the passing plate? We must arc higher. I say this as a mother as the world prepares to burn pyre. We must arc higher.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Tonight, I am extremely honored to read the proclamation for the MLK. If we ask Ms. Frida Gany, the executive director of the MLK, if she would come on down? Welcome, Ms. Frida.
Thank you.
Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. believed that true peace requires not only the absence of war, but the powerful presence of justice, and that violence brings only temporary victories. Violence, by creating many more social problems than it solves, never brings permanent peace. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. awakened the hearts of Americans by calling for true equality and integrity among citizens, by promoting a sense of justice that moves beyond racism, and by encouraging a national realization that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And whereas the people of Spokane should continue to live by Dr. King's principles, ethics, and philosophy, that all of us must work together for the common cause of bettering human mankind as a united body and serving our community in positive ways. Now therefore, I, Lisa Brown, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the people of Spokane, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr.'s Observance Day in Spokane and invite all residents to participate in a day on, not a day off, to celebrate the life and legacy of this civil rights leader. Ms. Scandi, if you'd like to have words.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, city council members. It's been a while since I've been here, but I just want to say that thanks to you again for the proclamation, and I hope that most of you or all of you will be able to join us as we honor the life and legacy of Dr. King with all or attend maybe one event. Eastern will be having on the 18th of January a day of service conference at the MLK Center. There will be different workshops on health disparities and talking about health disparities in our community, how you can become active in addressing those issues, and talking about more sustainable environments for our residents and people in our community. There will be a Sunday service on the 19th at Holy Temple Church where the ministers will honor Dr. King and his faith and commitment to the church. Also, Monday will be the annual Unity March, Rally March, and Resource Fair at the Convention Center beginning at 10:00 a.m. So following the rally at 10:00, there will be the march, and then we come back into the Convention Center for the Resource Fair. So I hope you can join us in all the festivities and activities. You can find more of this information on our Facebook page, so.
Are they allowed to clap? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. We'll see you Monday. I would also like to announce that for the first time, city council will be tabling at the Resource Fair, so we'll be getting information out about boards and commissions. There may be some council members that will be there if you'd like to interact with them and learn more about your city. So again, do the rally, do the march, and then come see your electors at City Hall, at the rally. All right, going on, I want to get some clarity from Mr. Wright on what happened last week. We had pulled the payment for the Larry Stone property, and that was left up in the air. What is our process for it, Mr. Wright?
Well, as we discussed this afternoon, there's some gray areas about what it means for the council to vote on the claims of the coming mayor's report. We're still going to be looking at that and perhaps down the road, giving the council some other options on how to respond to the mayor's claims. But in the short term, Ms. Fister and I have talked about this a little bit, we think it's probably just best to have a motion to add that claim back into the consent agenda for tonight and then vote on the consent agenda as a whole.
Okay. All right, before that, I think I'll go ahead and take public testimony. Do we have any for the consent agenda this evening? We have one, Derek Azaro, for public testimony on the consent agenda.
Derek Azaro, former resident of Logan Neighborhood. I'm just looking over this, number three, $50,000. Turn the page, you got another 50, another 50. All this money, is there any accountability at all? Is anybody asking how many people actually come through the doors after they get the money? Do they do headcounts? Do they have any kind of finances they have to give to all of you to take a look at whether it justify all this money being given to them? You know, we've already gone over, you know, this is kind of off the subject, but the COP program, the COPS program, they're being held to all these stringent rules to get their money through the same process the rest of these are. I really feel strongly that we need to start really getting down to facts. If you're going to give this money out, I don't know whether it's Shelter Me, whoever that is, I mean, are these people turning in receipts? Are they being held accountable for anything? You're just going to green-light this money and just give it to them without even asking, you know, why you need the money? How are you dividing the money? Who above is getting all the money? You know, the CEOs of a lot of these organizations, they make all the money, and the people at the bottom hardly get anything. So I think to all of you going for this year, let's start making all these, anybody you give money to, especially the big players, they have to start turning in accountability books, show why they need the money, justify whatever it takes to, before you actually hand it over to them, they need to show why they need it. Do they actually have money in the bank? Do they not have money in the bank? You know, just like if you buy a house, you got to have, you know, loan papers, the same deal. Anytime you give somebody money, you have to have some answer to why you need it and how you're going to spend it, who's going to profit from it, and what's the outcome? You might give $50,000 to one of these shelters, but who knows how many people they actually come in the door? You know, hopefully, a lot of people do, so it's justified. But I think we need to start really clamping down on these organizations and start making them tell you exactly what's on their books and justify why they're asking for this money and why you should give it to them. Otherwise, you're just blank check, you know, anybody just, here you go, here you go, you know? It's really important, I think, going forward that we do stay on for this year with, you know, like I said before at other meetings, you guys staying on your ethics, following those ethics. And in the coming year, this is election year, so I imagine we're going to see a lot of drama over this next few months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time is up. Okay, now if I can get that, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, can we take 3A and 3D separately?
3A and 3D. Let's start with that. So on 3A, it is the $500,000 to the Way Out Shelter. Is there any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I mean, this has been the subject of a long fight that goes back to about 2020, having to do with whether or not it's appropriate to combine low-barrier sheltering with transitional housing. I would argue, and former councilwoman Stratton argued very strongly with me, that it was not appropriate, this is not the right use of this facility, and so I am strongly going to oppose this. We should not be combining populations that do not appropriately belong to be combined together.
Councilmembers opposed?
Yeah, I'll comment on that because I actually spoke with the Salvation Army at the neighborhood council meeting this last week, and they are very supportive of this approach and are excited about this approach. The facility actually has the populations on two different floors, and they said that this has actually been a great opportunity to bring people in and move them on a pathway, a more stable pathway. And the neighborhood did not have any complaints about this either, so as a representative of this district, I'll be supporting this.
You have the council comments? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would say is, I mean, Salvation Army was excited about it four years ago as well. There's a lot to benefit them with doing this, and there are some benefits, but in the grand scheme, somebody who is addicted and in a bad situation should not be bringing that into the same space as somebody who is desperately trying to get away from it. And that, to me, ultimately means I cannot support this.
You have a commentary? All those in favor of 3A, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. The next one was 3C?
D.
3D, my apologies. 3D, that's.
I thought we were taking those together, but.
Okay, well, we took them separately. Here we are, revive counseling, another for inclement weather funding. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I mean, for a long time, I've been trying to get data on this. The success rate of Revive have been not so successful in getting that, but really the crux of this issue tonight is the secrecy around this and the fact that they're not being open about what the location of the inclement weather sheltering is, and I just, I don't believe in that type of activity. I think if you're using government money, you should be transparent, it should be a mandate upon you to act in such a manner and to be able to kind of be secretive around some of your activities, regardless of the reasons for it. I don't think that that's right, and for that reason, I cannot support this.
You have the council commentary? I would just say these did go out for NOFA, that there was a process to select these entities for this inclement weather that was, went through a process through CHHS, and we trust that they have asked these questions, and this is not the first time, it's been before us, so we could have asked for additional information at that time. So here, Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, we did ask these questions, and the answer we were given is, we're not going to tell you. And so it's not like the question wasn't asked, it was, we're not going to tell you. And that's not just that, but we've seen even recently how, you know, shelters have been cited recently, and, you know, what was clearly described to us in the paper, or what was clearly said to us in the paper is, we know there's going to be intense pushback, and so we're not going to tell you, we're just going to open it up, and then you're going to be able to deal with it, which I understand, you know, the intense pushback, you know, and how difficult it is to go through public engagement when there is intense pushback. God knows we dealt with it when I went through dog parks and trying to get a dog park anywhere in the city of Spokane, and it's kind of a half joke, but it was something where the intense pushback, we ended up not going with four or five different locations before we ended up where we are now, but it was because we needed to go out and talk to the public. And even though, again, it didn't end up in any one of our preferred sites, it didn't end up in District 1, it didn't end up on that, we still ended up in a place where the community was happy with where it went and the investment happened. And so intense pushback happens, right? But we cannot avoid talking to the public about something that's going to have substantial impacts to the community just because the pushback is going to be tough, right? If you believe strongly, if we believe strongly as a city that that's where it should be, that the purpose that it's going to be serving is so great, then we should have the courage of our convictions to stand in front of people and say, this is what we're wanting to do and why.
Councilmember Dillon and Councilmember Klitschke.
Yeah, not sure it's quite fair to compare service providers to dog park discussions. Those are two very, very different things. And also with, I believe what you're mentioning is the medical respite facility. There was outreach, there was a lot more, I think, conversations that did happen within the district, and there's going to be more as well.
Councilmember Klitschke.
I disagree that the sites of our inclement weather shelters are secret. That's not true at all. We know that many of the existing shelters have surge capacity. We were given a presentation detailing where we have capacity for the inclement weather surges. There are definitely not as many as we might need and we should have. I think we're working towards getting more, but there's no secrecy, nor could there be because then providers would not know where to put people. So I'm not really sure where this is coming from.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, so if you look at the documentation, the address is the same as Cannon, but when you try to ask as to what the location actually is, they won't tell you.
Any other commentary? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes.
Council President, can we take B and C separately as well? Or together, but as outside of the rest of the consent agenda?
B and C as well?
Yeah.
Okay. We could have pulled number three all in its entirety.
I don't think so. I think it would, the vote might have been different, but.
All right, so we are now going to discuss B, which is Catholic Charities for $500,000.
We can take B and C together.
B and C together, and then Volunteers of America Hope House for $500,000. Councilmember Bingle, do you have commentary?
Nope.
Any other commentary? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Now, on to the rest of the consent agenda. Noting that item number 4C had been pulled to the 27th, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate.
Wait, sorry.
I'm sorry. Just take the motion.
Did you want to add? I'm sorry. Did you want to add number nine first? So moved.
Second.
Yes, we do want to add number nine. Thank you, we're all into, so I can, a motion to add.
We got a motion in a second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Noes? That passes. All right, Ms. Fister, on to first readings.
Then we need to take the consent agenda as a whole minus the items deferred.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented.
Aye.
Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is pass. Ms. Fister, on to you.
First reading ordinances, ordinance C.36629 relating to building opportunity for housing BOH follow-up code fixes, making changes to the Unified Development Code that are intended to fix errors, clarifying create more flexibility within the Spokane and Espe Code, amending Spokane and Espe Code, Section 17A.020.060F definition, 17C.111.205 development standards tables, 17C.111.210 density, 17C.111.220 building coverage and impervious coverage, 17C.111.235 setbacks, 17C.111.310 open space, 17C.111.315 entrances, 17.111.320 windows, 17C.111.325 building articulation, 17C.111.335 parking facilities, 17C.111.420 open spaces, 17C.230.100 general standards, 17C.230.110 minimum required parking spaces, 17C.230.120 maximum required parking spaces, 17C.230.130 parking exceptions, 17C.230.140 development standards, 17G.080.040 short subdivisions, 17G.080.065 unit lot subdivisions, adopting a new section, 17C.230.020 vehicle parking summary table, and repealing 17C.111.450 pitched roofs as amended during the January 6, 2025, 3:30 p.m. agenda review session. Ordinance C.36630 relating to language access and the recruitment of bilingual, multilingual applicants to the city of Spokane and amending, excuse me, Section 18.11.050 of the Spokane and Espe Code. And ordinance, excuse me, I've got a scratch in my throat. Ordinance C.36666, excuse me, ordinance C.36633 amending Section 17D.100.230 of the Spokane and Espe Code to add centers and corridors to historic preservation review, proposed demolition of historic properties. Also to bring review of buildings by the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission into compliance with 2023 Washington House Bill 1293 by implementing clear and objective design standards, and to modify the limitations on redevelopment of property after a historic or eligible structure has been demolished, further action is deferred. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Ms. Fister.
Thank you, sorry.
And to my Gonzaga students out there, aspirational be a city clerk. Ms. Fister is absolutely impressive, so thank you. We have one public comment. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So first off, primarily this is about the preservation, historic preservation ordinance. I want to mention that first, I'm a big fan of historic preservation, and I do think that whenever possible, we should save architecturally significant and historic properties in our city because it adds a local flair and it's a great way to look back at what makes Spokane great. I don't tend to agree, though, with, oh, sorry, I'm weird, I'm getting nervous up here, don't agree with however with the, that after a potentially historic or historic building is demolished for whatever reason, whatever might need to have a demo in place on these things, that new developments that would replace them should be chained to the ghosts of the past. The current proposal does that, and instead, I believe that the underlying zoning that's present at the site should be what dictates the new replacement. Now, as an example, let's just say, for whatever reason, the inland auto freight depot that's located at 102 East Main gets damaged, it can't be saved, whatever's going on, it gets knocked down. Currently, that building's only two stories, and so as written, is it still 1.5? I believe it's still 1.5. As written, it could only be built to three stories when just down the block, we have the Jensen Bird Building, also a historic building, it's currently a six-story building. And as part of the U District, presumptively, the zoning there is permissive. I didn't check it, but I believe it's either 50 feet, 75 feet in that area, so it could be a six-story building. And while six stories could help any new construction project become financially feasible, most construction projects within three-story building is not likely to be financially feasible, so will be never be replaced via derelict site or vacant building and not receiving any type of use. I believe that's bad policy. I believe that it's bad policy to hold hostage new developments to ghosts of the past when the city needs to look to the future.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
That concludes our legislative agenda. We are now going to open forum. Open forum is two minutes. Please direct all your comments to the chair. We first have James E., and then Christine Quinn, and then Earl Moore. James E., welcome.
Is this open forum?
Yes, it is.
Okay, this came sooner than expected. Council, on December 29th, 2024, two floors above me, there was a officer-involved shooting that involved the killing of Joshua Musselman. He was my neighbor. He was somebody that, on a good day, he had high spirits. He was motivated. It was his worst day, and it did not have to happen like that. What's now gone is somebody who had a lot of plans for his life. Also, somebody who the systems that were designed to help him probably failed him. This is something that's very embarrassing, is that on January 9th, Joshua Musselman had a hearing at Spokane County. And you mean to tell me a week and a half after it happened, that was not cleared? That is very, very embarrassing to see. I'm going to dedicate the next 20 seconds for his loss. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christine, is Christine Quinn in the house?
No.
No? All right. Next, we'll have Earl Moore. After Earl, we'll have Derek Azaro. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council, I'm Earl Moore, North Spokane. I walked through the streets here in our city yesterday, and I am heartbroken. I'm appalled at what I saw. I sometimes think of all the money that is being spent on finding ways to kill people was used instead to feed them, house them, clothe them, and educate them, what a beautiful city we would have. We are too often afraid of the sacrifices we might have to make, but where there is true love, there is joy and peace. Let's pray. Almighty and most mercy for God, we remember, before you all poor and neglected persons whom it would be easy for us to forget the homeless and the destitute, the old and the sick, all who have none to care for them, help us to heal those who are broken in body or spirit, and to turn their sorrow into joy. Merciful Father, forgive those homeless persons whose poor decisions have led them to their current situation. Forgive those who are homeless due to drugs, alcohol, gambling, addiction, poor work habits. Forgive those people who would seek to take advantage of the homeless. Forgive those who look down upon the homeless. Forgive those of us who have resources to give to the homeless but refuse to do so. Forgive those agencies who claim to be advocates for the homeless but misappropriate the resources. Forgive our nation. Lord, forgive our nation for creating systems that produce a homeless population. Lord, forgive me for not being involved with action to help to sadness in our city. I pray, Lord, when you call, I hear, and I will follow the path and the plan that you have set before me. All of you up here are very blessed. You have a home to go to, you have warm food, and a family that loves you. Please consider your votes carefully for our city. Things are not looking too well, and I'm saddened. Only humility will lead us to unity.
Thank you, Earl.
And with unity, we will have peace.
Your time is up.
Amen.
Thank you. Derek Azaro, and then Sunshine Wigan.
Derek Azaro, formerly of Spokane. I'm going to piggyback on what I just said earlier. The people who are getting all this money, that run all these organizations, especially the top dogs, let's start talking about how much of that money actually filters down to the actual homeless. Everybody's down on the homeless for a myriad of reasons, but, you know, there's bad actors, but there's also obviously a lot of good people that do need help, a lot of families, you know, moms, single moms with kids and stuff. The people at the top are making the money. The people at the bottom aren't getting what they need. It's pretty obvious, they're all still on the street. The big players, Catholic Charities and some of the big guns here, they're filling their beds with people from out of country, which we understand that's why, you know, but, and they're filling their beds with people from out of town. They should be held accountable to some respect. How many people are actually the local people that are being helped? The actual people from Spokane? With all these beds that Catholic Charity has and some of the others, there's really no reason these people should be on the street. Those beds are available, but they're being sold out to other people for, you know, for their own personal reasons. But it's time, I think, now that it's obviously reached a high point where it's going to break. You know, you've got a lot of crime in Spokane, and it's not going to go away, because the industry, the homeless industry, is making all the money. It's a business, it's an industry. I've said before, these organizations from nonprofits from Spokane to Spokane Valley, they bring in $4 billion a year. They employ 28,000, over 28,000 people. Now, you know, they say the military base is the biggest employer here, no, it's not. It's the homeless industry that is the biggest business in Spokane, and it's never going to be fixed, it's not going to go away until...
Thank you, Derek, your time is up.
Thank you.
Sunshine, and after Sunshine, H.T.
Sunshine Wigan from Spokane. I just want to say thank you to all you guys for everything you've ever done for me, it means the world. For anyone out there that thinks that these guys don't care about you as an individual, you are wrong. They will openly, with open arms, help you. For every one person that is mean to you, there are 10 that love and support you, and I want everybody to just rethink about that, because sometimes we feel really beat down by things. So I just want to change the subject also. So we're seeing a lot of military tactics being used with the cops lately, and I wanted to point out why. Where did this start happening? It's really simple. So back a while ago, we decided to stop having the government train our cops, and we started hiring old sergeants, military sergeants, and people of that nature. And so naturally, because that is what they have grown up with, it is starting to show in our cop force. I'm not saying this is a bad thing, I'm just saying that this is something we are seeing. We did see where they threw up multiple people against the wall, they jumped out their cars, full force ran, threw them up against the walls from the parcade over to the store at the Rid Path, and I'm assuming this is more like DEA stuff for the drug stuff, because I did ask Bingo, and it wasn't you guys. So, but the whole point being, the mentally ill ran over to me, what's going on with their little walkers and things, and they were scared. Not only that, people that were in the Rid Path were there, and the mom was saying, get over here, get over here, back to the Rid Path, and the kids, like, Mom, you have to understand, and she's severely mentally ill, did not understand. I'm being detained because I'm standing here. So we're seeing these tactics...
Thank you, Sunshine, your time is up.
My name is H.T. Higgins. Shout out to Councilmember Cathcart for volunteering to work the point in time count. Kudos to President Wilkinson, Councilmembers Dillon, Cathcart, Bingo, Zepone, Klitschke, and Navarrete, for all, all of you, for going to the West Minister Respite Shelter opening last Friday. That is a huge statement, and I'm immensely grateful for you showing up. On January 29th, the Regional Homeless Collaborative is meeting. Councilmember Bingo and Zepone, I believe, represent the city council. Mayor Brown is invited to attend. The mayor has been steadfast in her unwillingness to explore a vehicle that can bring all the time, talent, and treasure of local jurisdictions, nonprofit service providers, philanthropic institutions, faith communities, and the business community under one entity that uses best practices to design a thoughtful, long-term plan to utilize all the resources in our community in an apolitical vehicle. We are one community, which includes the city of Spokane, Spokane County, and the city of Spokane Valley. This requires a regional approach. It is beyond clear that any kind of centered approach to a solution to this community challenge will only happen if the power bases in all of Spokane County come to the table. Councilmembers Zepone, Dillon, Navarrete, Klitschke, and Wilkinson, as Democrats, a co-sponsored resolution demanding that Mayor Brown, who is the blue siloed power base, comes to the table. And Councilmen Cathcart and Bingo, you need to work on Commissioners Cooney, Cuny, French, and Kearns, who are our red siloed power base, to come to the table and expend some political capital.
Thank you, H.T.
Remember, Democrats, the mayor did not elect you, the citizens of Spokane elected you.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Remember, in observance of MLK Day, we will not have council on the 20th, we will reconvene on January 27th. For that, again, I encourage you all to participate in the march, as was invited by Ms. Frida Gandy of the MLK Center. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second? Been moved to second, we are adjourned. Good night.